2019. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Almhurst City Council. I'm going to ask the wee blows from Jackson PAC 17 who are in the audience, I'm going to ask them to come up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask you all to rise. Line up there gentlemen and we'll face the flag over here. We'll take your cue whenever you're ready.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks guys. Clerk Malone, I ask you to call the roll.
Aye.
Here.
Polomski.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Conquest. Absent. Brennan.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent, we have a quorum, we are in session. On to Agenda Item 3, Public Hearing. We have a public hearing, 2019 Truth in Taxation Public Hearing. There's a public hearing scheduled for this evening. The public hearing concerns the city's 2019 tax levy. I call the public hearing to order. Roll call, Clerk Malone.
Bram.
Aye.
Polomski.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Conquest. Absent. Brennan.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. The purpose of this public hearing is to take public comment concerning the city's 2019 tax levy. Clerk Malone, are there any written comments concerning 2019 tax levy that have been submitted?
No.
Okay. And I'll ask if there's any members of the public who want to take comments for the record. Did we have a separate sign-up sheet for this?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Two things, but has anybody signed up for it? Okay. So, we're going to have, there's two opportunities to speak this evening. I want to clarify to make sure there's no confusion. We're having this public hearing, which we're having within our meeting. If anybody wants to speak about the taxes, they're more than welcome to do so now. However, that is different than the public forum that we typically have, which we will have immediately follow, well, two items passed this on our agenda. So, my point is, anybody who signed up for the public forum, this is not the time to do that, or anybody who wants to speak to public forum will have that in about five minutes. But, that having been said, is there any member of the public that would like to make any comments for the record regarding this open hearing? If so, please raise your hand. Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to make your way to the microphone over there, next to Chief Ruth. All right, Mr. Pagash, your comments as it relates to the Truth in Taxation hearing that we're having.
Yes, there was an article in the paper, too. I called up, left my name, that I wanted to talk about the tax increase. I guess nobody took it down. The council wants a tax increase of 7%. No matter what I say this evening, it'll pass. Of course, wanting to run the city. Also costs money to run a household. But we'll get our, you'll get your 7%. It used to be 4.99%, but then you didn't have to have the hearing. Things have changed. Federal government changed the rules on our tax returns and public lost. Yes, we did. Okay, simple as that. State would like a state income tax. Eliminate the flat tax. Will it pass? It's up to the people sitting in this room. May or may not, but if it does, it'll just grow over time. I want to ask this council to look at their treasurer's report. If you look at it, you begin to wonder. And whatever was in the drinking water this year, school district passed a bond issue, park district wants a bond issue, and I just looked at the agenda. City council wants a bond issue, plus all the bonds they already have. Unfortunately, the city put all the commercial property in tiffs. So, we lost out on that. You got in a little trouble with the EPA. Public's paying for that. You did some good, dug a few ditches, prevented a little flooding here and there. Looks like it's back on the agenda again. You and the school are working together. But it's what you've done with development in this town. People come in, got a development. Now, what you're going to give us if we do the development? And Addison is a prime example of it. For years, I listened to zoning and building codes. Didn't hesitate to give them an extra two stories, did you? Didn't mind giving them $500,000, did you? And that's what every development in this town. But when a resident comes here and says, hey, I'd like a little addition, like happened in the last meeting, every regulation, every zoning, every building code, every how much lane you can cover, it all comes into play. Didn't come into play with that development on Addison, did it? And on top of it, you're burying the Commonwealth Edison. Commonwealth Edison doesn't do anything for anything. They got a right of way and they'll stick to it. So, that means this fine group of residents here is paying for that, too. So, you're going to pass it. And the school board's going to ask for more. Art district, yeah, I've seen that meeting. You ain't got to change your mind. But they're going to come up with it. These people in this room are going to pay for it. And the city will go on. You also got on your budget $9 million of general obligation bonds. Plus all the general obligation bonds you already have, plus that line of credit that you keep on adding to. Don't tell the people what the total cost will be, just tell them you're buying a few general obligation bonds. Well, let's hope that their income matches your wishes. That holds true for this body as well as the school board and the park district. Somehow, you all begin to believe when you become elected that the public of this town just has endless sources of income. You don't stop. You look at your treasurer's report and all you do with it. It's only little pieces, but the little pieces add up to quite a bit. So, you'll pass it and they'll be required to pay it. And if the state gets what they want, what you people are doing here will make it look like you haven't done anything. Because the only one that's going to get hurt in this whole operation is the people sitting in these seats. They don't realize it, but they will. You know, yet the assessor's been running around. Property is worth more. But there hasn't been a citizen that's ever come to this council or any group that's It hasn't been told, hm, sorry, we can't do nothing for you. You know, we got rules. And when it comes to development, there are no rules. And I'd really like to know what that new foot piece of fire equipment's going to cost. You did change your zoning, didn't you? Got eight stories now. Maybe you ought to look into the fact whether the fire department can fight a fire in an eight-story building or a six-story building. An owner would appreciate it if he didn't have to pay for it. To get a okay to build a piece of property. $500,000, what's $500,000, right? Doesn't amount to anything, does it? And now you say, well, you'll just have to pick it up. And then you were paying for the retirement plans all these years. Man, we're keeping up with it, we're not behind the eight ball. Well, we changed the rules this year, so we got to come up with more. And you did. What did Alderman once say about the people paying the bill? It's only equitable. How about, once in a while, the commercial properties chipping in? They're all for development. And you give it, you give them a hunk of money without even thinking about it. How about giving a homeowner $50,000 so he can pay off his mortgage? That wouldn't pass this body if people were in here with guns. It's the resident. That's who's paying the bill. And like I said, if that state tax passes the way they want it, every governor and every legislative vote that ever comes after it will just increase it. Hope that economy go keeps on going the way it is. Because these people here can't go back to their bosses and say, we need more to pay because the city needs more money, the park district needs more money, the county needs more money, the state needs more money. That's the reality of it. Maybe they don't realize what way they see their taxes. It's only a little bit. And everybody's adding to a little bit. We'll see how little bit it is when we get our taxes. So, you'll do it. It's cut and granite. I've never seen this council back off anything they ever decided to do, especially when that affects a resident. As far as the commercial property, you can't do enough for them. So, don't even worry about the vote, Mayor. Just look at them and you can say it passed.
Anyone else wish to comment at this time? Seeing none, I will entertain, oh, yeah. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Deuter. Voice for Deuter. Voice, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, hearing is closed. On to Agenda Item 4, Receipt of Written Communication from the Public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit? Any written communication, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go on to public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that you direct your comments specifically to the chair of the meeting. We also ask, out of respect for work that we need to get done here this evening, that you keep your comments to three minutes, and also out of respect for other folks who may want to speak. When you get to the microphone, we are recording this. We ask that you state your name. Your address is optional. Clerk Malone, do we have anybody signed up for public forum tonight? Nobody signed up for public forum? Is there anybody who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet but wishes to address the council at this time and participate in public forum? If so, please raise your hand. I see one.
Good evening. It's the end of another year and another successful year with regards to stormwater mitigation. You finished the Southwest Almhurst mitigation projects number two and three and took over 100 houses out of flooding and it's very much appreciated by the residents. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, that concludes public forum. Announcements, Agenda Item 5, any announcements from the dais? Seeing none, we'll go on to consent agenda at this time. Is there any item, any Alderman wishes to have removed? Vote no or provide further comment. I will start, 7.1. There are some corrections in the minutes that need to be made. They have been made, but we didn't have a chance to post them. So, there's no rush on that. We're going to put those on the next agenda and for approval. And we will post the corrections. Alderman Mulliner.
7.17.
Anyone else? Alderman Bram.
7.16 and 7.43.
Okay. 7.1, 7.16, 7.17, 7.43. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item 7.1, 7.16, 7.17, and 7.43. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. Clerk Malone.
Bram.
Aye.
Polomski.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest. Absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, and one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries, consent agenda, minus items 7.1, 7.16, 7.17, and 7.43 is approved. On to Agenda Item 7.16. This is an ordinance, I would ask Clerk Malone to read the ordinance, 7.16.
An ordinance granting a variance from the stormwater detention, storage requirements at the property commonly known as 183, 189, and 191 North Addison Avenue.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll defer to Alderman Bram who pulled this.
Okay, Alderman Bram, you pulled this. You have the floor.
Thank you. As I stated during the report of this same issue, I'm not in agreement with the fee in lieu of in this case, especially a fee in lieu of, albeit following county, I guess, ordinance of under $4,000. Ironically, we're talking about another area for stormwater management today, later on the agenda, so I cannot support this.
Okay, any other comments? Clerk Malone.
Bram.
No.
Polomski.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest. Absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, and one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay, motion carries, Agenda Item 7.16 is approved. On to Agenda Item 7.17. This is an ordinance. Alderman Mulliner, before I ask Clerk Malone to read it, you pulled this.
Yes, as you're aware, in Chapter 2 of our MCO, we're allowed to have a reconsideration of a vote. And during the last meeting, we voted on a report for the Inglewood's variance, and I would like to make a motion to reconsider. So, I hereby move to reconsider the December 2nd, 2019 Development Planning and Zoning Committee report for the Inglewood's application and return it to the committee to include the review of the petitioner's modification of their application and the deletion of three variations resulting in a single variation.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Alderman Toledo with the second. Clerk Malone, I know you have your motion written down there. Does the clerk have a copy of that? Can you hand it down to her for the record? Okay. So, before I entertain discussion, just a little procedural stuff that I want to confirm. Alderman Mulliner mentioned it. We have something that's called a motion to reconsider that is allowed by our code and also allowed by Robert's rules. Motion to reconsider must be done in the meeting when the vote has taken or the next immediate meeting, which in this case is the case. Motion also must be made and seconded by the prevailing side. In this case, Alderman Mulliner and Alderman Toledo are on the prevailing side. So, all in order so far. Should this motion pass, the, this is, should it pass, the Inglewood's application variation at all, as included in said motion, would go back, would be directed by council, that's the difference, but directed by council to go back to the committee. That's what the motion states. If the motion passes, that means the motion to reconsider has been approved, that actually makes Agenda Item 7.17 moot. Doesn't exist because this is written on the old report. This is a reconsideration. So, if the motion that Alderman Mulliner has made and Alderman Toledo has seconded passes, 7.17 goes away. I know the intent would be for it to go back to committee based on information received from the applicant by staff and shared. So, people clear where we are? Additional conversation or discussion? Alderman Levin.
Since I didn't see it, I couldn't quite catch, is it saying, just send it back, reconsider, send it back to committee or something added on the end that I couldn't quite?
I'm happy to read it for you. Motion to reconsider December 2019 Development Planning and Zoning Committee report for the Inglewood's variation and return the committee report to the DP and Z committee to include a review of the petitioner's Inglewood's modification to their application and deletion of three variations resulting in a single variation request.
I don't think that's proper. If we're going to reconsider it and send it back to committee, then whatever the committee does, but it sounds like we're voting on whatever, you know, specific relief is, doesn't seem appropriate to me. If we're going to reconsider or send it back, I would support that.
Okay. The motion as written is appropriate. I understand your point. Additional comments?
Well, then I will make a motion to delete that portion of that motion that talks about the three variations so that it would stop after we reconsider and send it back to committee for additional consideration.
Let me just clarify and then I'll ask for a second. So, the motion is to reconsider the December 19th Development Planning and Zoning Committee report for the Inglewood's application and return the committee report to the DPD committee. That's yours. The addition is to include a review of the petitioner's modifications to their applications and deletion of the three variances resulting in a single variation request.
That's correct.
Okay, so, we have a motion to amend, I assume is in order. Motion to amend the motion to reconsider, which would be to omit the direction to the committee to include the petitioner's modifications. Wait a second. Alderman Brennan. Okay. Discussion on the motion to amend. Alderman Plumb.
When this was just presented, my first thought was, well, we typically, if we're discussing motion to reconsider, it's to reconsider, however, with the explanation that this goes back to committee, my thought is that this is regarded more like a referral where there's a referral and sometimes a referral has some specific intention or direction, even though it still would be up to the committee to come up with its own conclusion. So, I guess I would just say, you know, is it, it's my sense that because this is going back to committee, is it correct that it should be regarded like a referral where there is some direction, however, the committee can decide how they want to decide on it?
I think this is a unique situation. We don't get this very much. I would say this, that Alderman Mulliner's approval is well within order, in my opinion. It does give what I'll call an arrow direction based on information submitted by the applicant, but that's up to council. So, I think it's appropriate, in order for Alderman Levin to propose the change. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I guess I'm looking for some clarification on, perhaps from Alderman Levin, on why he thinks it would be more appropriate or provide better guidance to send this, to have the amendment without that final phrase.
Alderman, sorry about that.
Well, I guess, having not seen it in advance, it's not clear to me, is the intent, we're referring it back to the committee to look at those or we're directing the committee to take certain action?
I don't think we're directing the committee. I don't, Alderman, I'll throw it over to Alderman Mulliner to clarify or answer any questions about his specific motion. Alderman Mulliner.
We're asking the committee to review those changes that have been brought forward. We're not asking, we're not telling them that this is the absolute direction. We're just asking them to review those changes, those necessary changes.
Alderman.
Well, then perhaps I misunderstood. If that's, if it's just to review based on those changes but not directing the committee to take any specific action, I would withdraw my motion.
Okay. Is that a fair statement by Alderman Levin? Fair statement, okay. So, Alderman Levin's requesting to withdraw it, and I would ask the secondary also approves it. Okay. Motion to amend withdrawn. Back to the original motion before us. Any additional comments or questions? Toledo.
Or maybe it's not a point of order. Go ahead. I'll just raise my hand.
Alderman Toledo, and then we'll go to Alderman Bram if he wants to continue after your conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, in the spirit of the original motion that I seconded with Alderman Mulliner, you know, I, the intention was more of a explanation of why was the intention of that second phrase. You know, the applicant came to staff, presented, you know, some material changes to the application, and I support the committee taking a look at those changes. I think it's prudent to do it in the context of the committee versus making those changes on the fly here on the dais. I think it'll be transparent. It will ensure that no mistakes are made from rushing through things, and I think that the applicant will still be able to achieve the timeline that they're desired, assuming things, you know, how things come out of the committee. So, I look for everyone's support of the motion. Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just contemplating procedurally, and that's why I was about to raise a point of order. If this is allowed and how it is allowed or under what terms it's allowed, I don't know the specifics of what the petitioner has presented, but is this allowed to be a motion to reconsider because one of those options in the initial request was the 30, meet the 30% and just have a variance? Why is, why is it allowed at this time? And why isn't it to go all the way back to commission?
Okay, so, motion to reconsider is allowed by anybody on the prevailing side for any reason they so choose. It doesn't mean it's a good reason. It might get denied. In this case, it sounds like it's a pretty good reason, so it's certainly appropriate to have a motion to reconsider. As I stated at the beginning of this conversation, motion to reconsider is allowed in our rules to be immediately following the vote. Give an example of that. Sometimes we will vote on, let's say, right of way, and somebody really needs the right of way to do whatever improvement they want in their house, and we vote to give it to them, to sell to them for $50,000, and that gets denied. The prevailing side can then take that and reduce that number to try to get it to pass again. That's one way it has happened, I know specifically in the past for us at the same meeting. However, motion to reconsider is also allowed for our vote at the meeting immediately following. So, that's all the reason that's needed for a motion to reconsider.
But it's, I guess, a difficulty I'm having because it was in the negative, that now we're making a statement that almost like we're starting over. we're making a statement that almost like we're starting over because that recommendation was in the negative. It wasn't clear, it was, it's not like an amendment, it's, it was a flat out yes and no. So, that's the difficulty I'm having on this motion to reconsider.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions? All right, Clerk Malone, Clerk Malone, Malone, Clerk Malone. Haven't even had a drink yet. Clerk Malone, I would ask that you call the votes on the motion to reconsider.
Brennan.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Tuluto.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mullenar.
Aye.
Doiter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays and one absent.
Your motion to reconsider carries, which means that the Agenda Item 17.17 is moot and that goes away. I know that the applicant is in the audience, so I want to clarify something. I don't believe, Alderman Mullenar, are you, does your committee meet on the 23rd?
I'm not sure yet. We're waiting to see whether the chairman's going to be available.
Okay. So, I'm going to say 50/50 at best.
Right.
That the committee's going to meet this month, which means that the next committee meeting most likely would be the 13th.
Correct.
At which time committee will consider this item that's been referred back, mayor may not get out of committee and would come to council after that.
Correct.
Okay? Understood? All right. Onto Agenda Item 7.43. This is a resolution. I would ask for Clerk Malone to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional design engineering services agreement in connection with the Sailor Swain Valette Stormwater Improvement Project.
Put this resolution before council. I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, seconded by Alderman Doiter. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As before, I will defer to Alderman Brennan who pulled this report.
Alderman Brennan, you pulled this. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I did not have an opportunity to speak to the report two weeks ago. I missed the consent agenda. I was here a little late, so I wanted to take the opportunity to speak to the resolution. My concern with this resolution, I'm, I'm very happy to move forward with all stormwater projects. The concern, however, is making the decision upfront of doing underground storage for this particular stormwater project and the cost to the residents, overall, the cost to the, overall residents of Elmhurst. And this is a draft that I received by City Manager Grabowski, but the cost if we did open air detention, which most of the locations in town are open air detention, other than on Washington at this time, the cost total is 299,581, the difference between the two, the two being below or underground as well as open air. The cost for underground, now mind you, the acre feet is more, is $2.2 million. So, about a $1.9 million difference. And here's where I have an issue with moving forward with this resolution as written. $1.9 million. We waive and we, we do fee in lieu of and we take stormwater very seriously, but this is a significant increase. And I know that the acre feet difference is 8.77 for the underground and 4.5 for the acre feet, but the cost isn't double like you would assume. It is close to 10 times the amount, from 299,000 roughly and change to $2.2 million and change. That's a significant cost. And I know some on the dais have argued that we need every drop of stormwater detention possible. When we discussed buying these properties, we discussed that four lots close to each other would be sufficient. Now, I'm not sure why four lots with underground detention is sufficient or needed, but that's the proposal before us. The cost per acre feet for the open air is $66,000. The per dollar acre feet for underground is 251,000 and change. So, we're talking four times the amount per acre feet for the underground storage. Again, to me, significant. We only have one other location that's underground storage today. The rationale that I was told by this, by city staff was that due to the water level, the water table in that area, it was a necessity to do that. I have not heard of this being a necessity to underground detention. I do know that this cost is significant. We have bonds, we have tax increases, everything else on this agenda today, but we're willing to spend close to 10 times the amount for underground storage and close to four times amount for the per acre feet cost. The only reason why I can't support this is moving in the direction of paying significant dollars for underground storage when I have not heard or seen or read in the stormwater reports by Burke saying that this is a necessity in this area to have done. Nowhere did I find anything that said that we need this amount of acre feet at, especially at this cost, in the stormwater report. So, albeit I'd love to move forward with stormwater detention, I would be more than like, more, I would be in favor to do open air detention on these four lots, but I can't support a $2.2 million price tag in excess of what it would cost otherwise.
Okay. Any additional comments? Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to answer a couple of the questions that Alderman Brennan brought up, you won't find anything about underground storage in the Burke report because that concept was not looked at at that time and it's only was brought up as we've gone through the last 10 years of stormwater projects. So, it wasn't a technology that could have been brought to bear at the time. The reason why the committee decided to move forward was simply, number one, looking at the area and the homes that we have purchased, by going underground, we can complete the project and get moving on it. So, it is a matter of timing. If you do the math, we would have to buy at least four more homes to get the same quantity of storage above ground. So, for those reasons, I speak for the committee unless they want to speak for themselves, that is the reason why we passed the report 4-0 and moved it to council. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments? Clerk Malone.
Brennan.
No.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Tuluto.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mullenar.
Aye.
Doiter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay and one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda Item 7.43 is approved under reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. 8.1, Mayor Morley, that's me. Two things. One, this is our last council meeting of the year. So, for all of you watching at home and anybody who watches this later and everyone in the audience, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, the last time we're before you as a council. Second, I want to reiterate something that a couple of council members have said in the past, but I want to highlight it. I was fortunate today to have a energy efficiency review of my house by ComEd. And it's free and not only is it free, they give you a bunch of free light bulbs. And for anybody, any senior or anybody like me who really can't figure out how to replace the light bulbs in the back of my house that are 20 feet off the ground, they even replace them in those situations as well. So, I would certainly encourage everybody, I know we can post this, the phone number is 888-652-2955. Not only does ComEd come out and do an energy review, not only do they come out and replace all bulbs that are incandescent with LED, and by the way, they've, LEDs come a long way. My wife has a big problem with a lot of LED because it's too bright, but in the last three years, they really advanced and you can get soft light and soft bright and whatever you want. And the guy comes out, offers all that stuff. But not only do they do light bulb evaluation, they evaluate your windows, your thermostat, water flow in your shower. They gave me a free showerhead, insulated my pipes. It's really a fantastic service and it's free. It does take about two hours, but I would encourage everybody to do so. It's too, it sounds too good to be true, but it's not. And that's my report. City Manager.
Thank you. Like the mayor, on behalf of staff, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and say thank you for all your support over the past year.
Okay. Any other reports? Alderman Tuluto.
You made me think that it would be appropriate to communicate that the Finance Committee will not be meeting next Monday. So, we will meet again as a committee in January. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman, Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Same with the Public Affairs and Safety Committee. We will not be meeting next week. We will reconvene in January.
Alderman Kennedy.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The theme.
Yes, Public Works and Buildings will also not be meeting next Monday and will be taking up our next meeting in early January.
Okay. Hey, Alderman Mullenar, take the bull by the horns.
We're going to meet as long as we have a committee. If we have a chairman. I mean, that's all I need. I need a chairman because we want to.
You're still a definite maybe.
But we're a definite maybe.
All right.
We do have something we have to get through.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Onto 9.1. This is an ordinance. I'd ask Clerk Malone to please read the ordinance.
A budget and appropriation ordinance for the City of Elmhurst for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2020.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Doiter, seconded by Alderman Kennedy. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two, two items I wanted to discuss, which were on the circle backs and we talked about. I'll touch on one briefly. I, I still, after looking over past history, I still don't think that we should be utilizing TIF funds for road construction, especially early on in the TIF, like this one, like the North York TIF is. The item I want, the other item I wanted to touch on that's in this budget is about the part-time communications position. There was some discussion last time we talked about it during the circle backs and I kind of started to dig around a little bit and contacting other communities as well. One example that I provided last time was Glen Ellen having one individual to do their communications. I believe it was City Manager Grabowski made mention of Wheaton and that they had five individuals doing their communications, but as I dug a little bit further, I wanted to add some clarification. One of those is a web specialist and that's what they do. Media assistants, which we contract out. Municipal producer, which films and does the editing for the various programs, again, we contract out. PR coordinator writes monthly newsletters. I'm not sure who or who does that for us. It might be our current communications coordinator. And then the person in charge of the whole team. So, albeit they have five individuals that are underneath communications, those five individuals do roles that we already have filled. We have filled by either IT or the contractors we have who do the filming of the various things that we do, programs and otherwise, including the city council meetings. The other thing I didn't touch on last time, which I wanted to touch on tonight, was that we have a consultant whose role has been for the past many a years to do communications. And I did take note, following up with Director Trozine, that it seems like this individual's role has shifted a little bit from communications, but this is the reason this individual and that role was put in place. 50% of the time was to be done in regards to communications. Now, we're saying that we need to add another part-time person. So, we had an individual that we pay, the role we pay at $100 an hour for this contract position to do part and part communications. We have a communications coordinator and now we're saying that we need a part-time position to continue to improve upon our communication within the city and to all the residents. I don't, I don't feel the need for this. I voiced that concern last time. I don't see on why the City of Elmhurst would need to spend an additional $48,000 on a part-time communications position on top of the full-time position, on top of the contract position. When other communities do fine, I would even go as far as saying do very well with anywhere from one or two individuals or one and a half, and most of those who, most of those communities who do have more than one, it's about services that we already cover in-house or we contract out, being IT, being film production, et cetera. So, with that said, I would like to make a motion to amend this budget ordinance to remove the $48,000 salary, and I'm trying to find what that budget line item was or is.
If that's necessary. Alderman, I think we can get your intent without that.
Okay. I would like to make that motion.
A motion to remove the position currently slated for $48,000. Is that clear enough?
Correct.
Anybody in the council who does not understand that motion? Pretty clear? I'll entertain a second. Motion dies without a second. Alderman Brennan. Any additional comments?
None.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So, first, first off, I'd like to, you know, thank the city manager and staff. You know, this is a very detailed process that everybody up here on the dais takes very seriously. This is my third budget that I've had the, you know, privilege to vote on and review and participate in the process. I'm impressed with the process and really do appreciate the thoughtfulness and accuracy from, from city staff. I have not much more to add than, than the reviews over the past several weeks, but this budget will have my support.
Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, like Alderman Brennan, there's a lot of hard work that goes into this, so I'd like to thank everyone involved, the department managers, Tom Trozine, the city manager, all the aldermen for taking all the time to do what we do, to look this over and, and discuss things that are important. In a little bit, we're going to be talking about the bond issue that occurred today. And I, unfortunately, I didn't think about it until right now, but the S and P report on our credit rating mentions the word budget, I'm going to make up a number, 70 times. And it says that we have a strong budgetary process. So, this is, underlies everything that we do in this community. It's the basis for our financial planning and our execution and how the world looks at the City of Elmhurst, how the financial world looks at the City of Elmhurst. So, this is a very important document, something that we've given a lot of thought, something that the financing world looks at and looks at very favorably, as everybody will understand in a few moments. It would be remiss if I didn't try and insert my landing the airplane analogy right now, so I'm going to do that. We've come close again. We're still right above the runway. Our fund balance is in great shape, but we haven't actually broken and touched down yet. We're still above the 33% guideline. That's, that's good and we have plans to use some of that in the future, but again, as noted by S and P, our, we always exceed our budget expectations. You know, we, we find ways to do things differently. We find cheaper ways to do things. We never really get into the abyss of way overspending and missing things on the low side, knock on wood. So, I am in full support of this budget. Um, so, um, I am in full support of this budget, um, I think it's an excellent plan, um, I think that should we need to change direction throughout the year, um, we'll make a, we'll make wise and informed decisions if we need to do that. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Clark Malone.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Pluto.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mollner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Debatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Budget is approved. Um, I echo the sentiments of, uh, folks up here on the dais. I really appreciate the effort that staff and council puts into this, every year, this year is no different. Um, and, um, as Alderman Brennan said, we all take this very, very serious. Uh, so I appreciate it. On to agenda item, uh, 9.2, this is an ordinance. Clark Malone, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance providing for the issuance of 9,925,000 general obligation bonds, series 2019 of the city of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of financing certain capital improvements within said city and paying the expenses incident there and to providing the levy and collection of direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of and the interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to FHN Financial Capital Markets, Memphis, Tennessee.
Okay, to, uh, put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman York. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's a big night, uh, we just approved the 2020 operating budget, and in that operating budget assumed a bond issue that we are now talking about. Um, we have some very good news in relationship to the bond issue today. Um, I'm going to let, um, Mr. McCanna speak about that shortly, but I wanted to, um, make a couple of comments before we invite him up to speak to us and share the, the news on the bond issue. Preceding the bond issue, and Alderman York was referencing this document slightly, was a, the S&amp;P, the Standard and Poor's, um, rating of our city and our creditworthiness as a city in preparation for the bond issue. I'm happy to report, uh, that the S&amp;P back in, at the end of November, gave the city of Elmhurst once again reaffirmed our AAA credit rating, and we should all be cheering, yay! That's a really big deal because it gets us extremely competitive, it gets us the best, um, interest rates as a community, so that we can borrow at very low and attractive costs to fund the capital projects that we're undertaking here in the city. This bond issue is going to be covering, um, a couple of key stormwater projects here in 2020, and, um, we received a rate of 2.19% on our bond issue, which is, uh, just really amazing. So I would like to thank, um, I'd like to thank city staff, the management team, I'd like to thank the city council, and the direction and the support for the financial decisions that we're making as a council and on behalf of the community. All of those things contribute to our ongoing stellar credit rating, and put us in a position to be able to afford capital projects at a very low interest rate. A couple of comments, because I think, I'm gonna just quote from this, uh, rating report, because I think it really underscores, um, the, the role and the job that, that is being done here and, and the benefit that it provides to our community. So on their overview, this is the Standard and Poor's rating overview, um, and their summary, "The city, Elmhurst, is a desirable residential Chicago suburb with a growing tax base. The city has a strong management team, as evidenced by its consistent financial results, very large fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. The city's pension obligation is large, but it has maintained its police and firefighters' pension funding at a much higher level than the vast majority of municipalities in Illinois. We believe, we, the credit rating agency, believes that with its home rural revenue flexibility, it will be able to manage the potentially elevated pension costs." So I think those are just all, um, really strong statements, um, and echoes why we received the AAA credit rating. Um, so it's a great thing, and now I would like to, um, and make a motion to suspend the rules to allow Mr. McCanna from Sphere Financial, who, um, helped us through the bond issue process, to come up and make some comments.
Uh, okay, a motion to suspend rules, second by Alderman York. This will allow, uh, this gentleman to address council on our current bond issue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Sir of the floors, yours, please introduce yourself to the council and the audience.
Okay, good evening, I'm Kevin McCanna from Sphere Financial. Uh, we had a sale today of your bonds, uh, 10 o'clock this morning, and, uh, the, there's a letter in front of you listing the nine bidders who showed up, they put in a total of 53 bids, this is done on an internet basis, kind of like eBay, and if you look at the second page, you'll see the bidding results, um, and I think one thing that's really important is that the first two bidders each bid seven times. Very, I mean, all nine put in a total of 53, but the first two bidders bid seven times, and the difference in the first two bids was the, the difference between 2.196 and 2.20. So very attractive. So, uh, earlier people were talking about this is almost free money, well, it's not quite free, but it's pretty close when you're getting down to 2.2%. Uh, so I think that the process went very well, uh, the city will get its money on, on December 30th, and the bonds will be delivered then. Um, and I think it just went very well, the, again, with your AAA, and the report does mention budget many times, um, and talks about budget flexibility and how well you're doing with that, and, and it really is a good, the S&amp;P report really is a good report card on what the, not just what the city is, but what the council can do, uh, in helping the city with its financials and, and the financial stewardship. So with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions? I think we're good. Thank you so much for the good news. Back to the motion before us. Alderman Toledo, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Any other comments? Clark Malone.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Pluto.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mollner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Debatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda item 9.2 is approved. On to agenda item 10.1, a resolution, I'd ask Clark Malone to read the resolution.
A resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a 2019 comprehensive intergovernmental agreement between the city of Elmhurst and the city, um, and the Elmhurst School District 205 regarding tax increment financing and stormwater management projects.
Okay, to put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Mollner, second by Alderman Kennedy. Discussion. Alderman Mollner.
Uh, this has been a long time coming, this resolution is a, uh, good thing for the city of Elmhurst and the citizens of Elmhurst, and we're looking forward to a positive vote on this for this evening to move this forward.
Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, as Alderman Mollner says, it's an agreement that's a long time coming, it's taken hours and hours and hours of negotiation. I think, I don't know if there's hardly any aldermen on the dais that didn't jump in at one point and try to help, but I give credit and thanks to the mayor for being in there to steer the ship through the whole process, and I think it's a, a very good agreement that I'm pleased to support.
Okay. Any additional comments? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. This was a tough one for me because I think that the city has put forth a lot in this agreement. Um, I, I won't go through the whole laundry list, but some of the items being the 1.2 million fee in lieu of that's been discussed when York was built, waiving that, moving forward, et cetera, down the line. Um, I'm in support of this because overall, I feel that this is an agreement that is a win for all city of Elmhurst residents. And I'll just leave it at that, I, I, it, it was tough because I, I feel like the city has negotiated well and has given, um, a lot of various issues to 205, but I think this is a good agreement overall for all of the Elmhurst residents.
Okay, any other comments? Oh, Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm very excited to support, um, this IGA. I, I think that, uh, it was a lengthy time, but at the end of the day, our, our residents expect us to come together and, and serve our communities, and I, I think this report does exactly that, and, and puts us in a position to do a lot of good for the city of Elmhurst. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Clark Malone.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Pluto.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mollner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Debatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Resolution is approved unanimously. Um, I'm gonna take an opportunity to comment, um, I normally don't participate in the deliberation, but, um, happy to comment after the fact. So just a little bit of, bless you, a little bit of backstory, I think, uh, certainly council and, uh, all of the city is aware of our stormwater challenges, and we decided to take these stormwater challenges seriously about 10, 12 years ago. Started with a, uh, report and actually a committee of citizens, spent over a million dollars on that first report, we have since spent tens of millions addressing this issue. Um, I, I nowadays say that, um, we were the town that flooded, we used to be the, known as the town that flooded, and now we're known as the town that addressed flooding. Um, and I think that's a pretty big feather in our cap, but also, um, it's a commitment that we made to protect the home values here in Elmhurst, and I can tell you this, on a regular basis, city manager and I are, are approached by our peers at DuPage Mayors and Managers, uh, in our help on leading them through their stormwater challenges. Shortly after I was elected in 2013, so this is almost six and a half years ago, um, I, uh, did my best to coordinate with parks and schools and anybody else, we're a landlocked community, one of the things the report made clear is to store water, you need open space. Without that, you can't do it, so we really need the help of our, uh, fellow taxing bodies, specifically parks and schools. So this has been a long time coming, I'm very happy, uh, that this has happened, uh, and that we're at the end. I literally have the, um, actually, the city manager has the signed copies from the school board in his office immediately following this meeting, I will, uh, go to my office and I will sign, uh, these documents and make it official. I want to thank the 10 to 12 aldermen, um, now and in the past, who individually worked hard on this in attempt to move this forward. I specifically want to thank Andy Acker, who was in the audience, Andy, he's, he's disguised by a beard. Um, this, this, uh, this 83-page agreement plus has been Andy's life for more than he would care to admit, but, um, he did a wonderful job, so I want to thank Andy for all his hard work, words can't say enough. Um, I want to thank city staff, um, that, uh, continue to be creative in our efforts to move forward. I want to thank the current council sitting here for their renewed, renewed efforts. Council may recall that on April 23rd of this year, the president of the school board wrote a statement to the press that said that they were done talking to us. So the fact that we're here tonight, I think, uh, is, uh, and a testament, a testament that it was a group effort, it was a team effort. I am so happy, um, that, uh, the continued efforts finally worked. I want to thank all the members of the school board who supported this effort, certainly without their support, this could not happen. And finally, I want to thank President, uh, Cara Coforio, she's the current president of the school board. Um, I know that, uh, there have been a lot of challenges, she and I have met numerous times, countless phone calls, um, and, uh, I can state unequivocally that without her effort and without her help, we would not be where we are today. Um, I do agree with others who said, um, this is certainly a win for the residents of Elmhurst, and I believe that the residents expect us to work together. I think this is just the beginning, kind of a turning a new leaf, or a new page, if you will, on the relationship with, uh, District 205, so I couldn't be happier, uh, that we're at this point, and I'm looking forward to this meeting ending, so I can go sign this document. Okay. Any other business? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mollner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you, everybody.